Okay, good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas on the table near the entrance or online on the city's website. The consent agendas, items are routine, which are voted on in one motion and vote. Unfinished or new business items are voted on separately. Councillors will be given the opportunity for questions or comments, followed by citizens who must speak at the podium and identify themselves. Citizens will be allowed to speak one time per agenda item for up to three minutes. Citizens who wish to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have an opportunity to do so during the public comment section of the agenda for up to three minutes. Okay, moving on to... We are going to open tonight with a public hearing. This is a general obligation bond public hearing. Brian, you just set the tone for what this is, what we're doing.
Sure, yeah, and you have the proposed project list also in your packet. It totals just under $5 million now. The only change since maybe the last time you saw this was the purchase of this building, 46th Front Street, has been removed pending our study just on market conditions. So you see a total of just under $5 million, includes projects ranging from administration to public safety, library, and of course paving is the big item in here. And we, as you know, have a lot of infrastructure to catch up on, roads and sidewalks. So that's our list of projects. Dick Ranigan is here also, our bond advisor, and our finance director Christina is here also for any particular questions on process or procedure. But this is the public hearing, and we'll have it back at our June meetings for first and second readings.
Excellent, thank you very much. Are there any members of the public here that are wished to speak tonight on with regard to the bond as it has been proposed? Brittany, anybody online? Any councillor who want to make... This is a public hearing, so not a council hearing, so we're good. Okay, well with that, we will close the public hearing and move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Any conflict of interest tonight from any of the councillors who will take votes tonight? Seeing none, we'll move right on to our presentation and third quarter finance report. Christina, you're up.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, I provided you a week before I went on vacation with the financial reports for the quarter ending March 31st. If you want to take a look at the memo I followed up with, the reports, all expense accounts are pretty much within budgeted third quarter periods with about a 75% expenditure rate, which, or less, which is what we would expect for this time, with the exception of some of the repairs and upgrades that were done here at the Annex Building, and also the IT department, which is influenced by the time of year when we pay our software agreements and lease equipment payments. So those can be directly influenced at different times of the years and not give a clean 12-month schedule, so just be aware of that. Revenue accounts shows that the city is receiving payments on time and in the amounts reflected in the budget estimates. I expect the year-end revenues will match or exceed the estimated budgeted amounts in most departments. I see no reason for concern in the general funds budget as of today with the bottom line and that we should finish in a positive position. The fund balance data, debt service expenditures, checking account balance, and current city trust investments were all updated in the new workbook schedule. The checking account, I wanted to talk a little bit about that if you got a chance to look at it. And I know some of you are seasoned council members, the public at large may not know, but when we look at that checkbook balance, it is only to show our cash flow, and I reference it just so you see the ability to pay bills when they're due and meet payroll commitments, and that it's a steady flow. It in no way connects with our actual fund balance. Our fund balance is a number targeted that if everybody today paid us every penny that they owed the city, and the city paid out every penny that it owed to anybody, what would we have left in there? That is your fund balance. All accounts receivable in, all expenditures out. And that's the number that we try to target at the end of every June 30th to get a picture of where the year closed so that you can tell what you have available to put toward the next year budget or for emergencies and to meet that 12% commitment that you're supposed to keep by the charter. So, does anybody have questions about the new schedules that I put in? Your front page is a total of your general fund expenditures and revenues and the offset of those accounts in your net balance, which will show you where your position is in those Your second page in that sheet breaks that down by where the administration and fire and rescue has EMS and things in it. It just breaks those lines out so you can get a more individualized picture of each section there. You have your bond proceeds and how those have been expended, and I update the bottom numbers to show... And there is one earlier one that's open in 2020. I have an open there by engine rehab. There's one payment that was left on that as of the end of March, but that... It's only because vehicle work has been delayed and purchases have been delayed getting things, parts in and upgrades, so that's been ongoing, but that should clear up and should be closed by the end of the year. And then your 2022 borrowing that you did and what's left in those projects, and by vast majority was some of the parks and recreation work which you are looking or have appropriated to do other projects throughout the community, so. I will, the next page, talk a little bit only on the bond payments because I think this is important with the bond hearing this evening. The schedule that you received in the bond paperwork references a principal and interest payment in the 25-26 year. I have had that conversation in the past. I've spoken with the city manager on it. I don't believe that it's financially wise to do that. I believe you should delay that payment until the 26-27 year of that interest payment. If you look at your bond schedule and what drops off from this point, you are currently committed to about $2.4 million in the '24 fiscal year. In the '25 fiscal year, it's $2.325, but in the '26, it drops to $2,058. And the following year, it drops to 1.8, which what it does is when that principal and interest comes online, it will basically create almost a perfect streamlined evenness to your debt service instead of these big spikes by adding that at a time where that didn't drop off. And I'm not sure that next year you want to start out with a $600,000 spike in the budget in just the debt service line. So you do have the ability to delay that and pay interest only up to that point and then stop making your principal payments in that year. You're allowed to do that for up to three years. And so I recommend, as the finance director, that you delay the principal and interest payment till that year to keep it at a flat even amount that's borrowed. Your next sheet, and I'll hurry because I know you have a lot to get done and things to do, but is your grant sheets? That breaks down all of those smaller projects that we get grant funding for that come from outside agencies and accomplish a lot of projects in the city throughout. There's, at any given time, 30 to 40 grants going on, so it's a lot of information. If you have particular questions on any particular ones in the balances or what they do, please just go through the city manager, let me know, and I'll provide more in-depth information on... Then your reserve accounts. These are the few that have been established for particular reasons, either by ordinance or by direct vote for different classifications. And it shows you what came in, what went out last year, what came in, what's gone out so far this year, and where our account balance is as of March. Fund balance sheet tells you where we are the end of each closing year. General unassigned, general restricted for education, total unassigned, general fund expenditures for the year, and percentage of your fund balance available to be utilized. And then you minus obviously your 12% for the city and whatever belongs to the school out of there. So I had made the statement tonight that I did not like... It's not that I disagree with the auditor. I don't like the way he presents the fund balance because he says you have not utilized any of the fund balance. And I spoke to the manager and said, "I'm going to say, you utilize the whole amount that you appropriate every year, day one, because to make that budget of what's approved, I put that number in." So you use it all. But when you have a strong year and you don't spend everything and you make extra revenue, what closes at the end of the year is has been enough to exceed what you have utilized to reduce the budget by. So therefore you stay in a positive position. Should you have a year where you do not take in those revenues or you over expend, you may not meet what you spent the year before or replace it. And I just... It comes out to the same thing in the long run, but I think it gives you a different perspective on that fund. It's not that you're raising extra money that you're not utilizing year after year. You're always utilizing it to make your budget numbers. It's just whether or not you have a strong financial year and control expenditures and revenues are good, or you don't. So just please keep that in mind when you make those decisions. I was asked, what do you have available? The city currently has $3,092,077.00 at the end of '23, available above your 12%. So I believe the manager put in 2.5 to be utilized. The total number that you could use and stay in compliant is 3.092. So the next page is your TIF revenue... Oh, I'm sorry?
Just a quick question. So if... And thank you for that clarification. I think it is an important note. If we have, if we're returning money to the fund balance, it means we're taking in more revenue or we're not spending. So this $3,092,077 is what we would have if the budget is flat. If there's a surplus, then there would be an additional...
Above expenditures, yes.
Right. Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Your next pages were your TIF accounts?
Can I ask a quick question while you're still on that subject? How typical is... How does this usually rise and fall from fiskier to fiskier? We're at about $3 million, so...
You've had four or five really good years, and the reason for those good years have been the Opera Funds, the American Rescue Funds, the re-establishment of fully funding main revenue coming back into the city, which was cut, revenue sharing for years, and then you've got a percentage. So that's fully realizing. The sales tax have been good on the state level and the income tax, which is what feeds into the revenue sharing. So those have been all very positive things that have come in, so that's directly influenced it. And the tight labor market has created a situation where we have been unable, or management has been unable, to fill all positions. And it has left half-year vacancies, full-year vacancies of some, which cause the under expenditure of funds on the other side. So the combination of two is what has created that strong market each year for those years. The year before, I believe the auditor said that in 2018 roughly... Let me see if I have it on here. You did utilize a bunch of fund balance.
It's on... It was 2017, and it's on the sheet.
$721,000 was what it dropped in that particular year.
That's the last time we didn't... That we had to use it, right?
That's right. But if you can see total budgeted fund balance, it shows your utilization significantly what's been being utilized in the past couple of years is significantly more than what ever was utilized before. So, does that answer your question?
Thank you.
The next sheets are the TIFs. What comes in on them? What's committed for the credit enhancement? Any balances that are appropriated and go into the budget, and any balances that have remained in that that were not utilized for expenditures? And we did work significantly this year on identifying what each one funds and breaking those out in the budget book. So you could look at more in detail what programs and things those are being applied to. So, and like I said, I had added the cash flow in the investment sheet in the book now so that you can just see quarterly how those are moving and that we have a strong checking position and our investments are doing well. Those are our trust and bequeaths, things for our cemetery and set-asides for specific purposes, charitable donations, those type of things, so. Is there any other questions that anybody has on the financial reports? Okay. And if you... I will attend the next meeting for the first budget reading, and if you think of anything that you'd like clarification and more information, if you get it through Brian, I'd be happy to pull it together and report it back to you.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Christina. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the manager report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, Kennebec County Commissioners last week did approve a 28% tax increase to the municipalities of Kennebec County. The only good news with this is that is lower than what was initially forecasted, so we are actually going to be dropping another $33,000 off of our current proposed budget with them going from, well, it started at 42% increase, now it's down to 28. So that's some, some good news. Some more good news, a grant award we have received from the Maine Historic Preservation Commission in the amount of $20,000. This will be for a survey project of the Victorian District. If you don't know where that is, it's roughly within the bounds of Elma Street on the eastern side of the district, North Street to the north, the Meszulinski Stream to the west, and Western Avenue on the southern end. So I'd like to thank Michael Hall, Community Development Specialist, for his work on this, another successful grant award for the city and $20,000, so we will, of course, take that. Deputy Chief Flannery at the Fire Department was recently selected by Maine EMS to receive an EMS Excellence Award. His contributions to EMS and the wonderful Fire Department are significant, and of course we thank him for his service. There will be an award ceremony on May 23rd inside the Hall Flags at the State House. The ceremony will begin at 11:00 a.m. with a remembrance ceremony at the EMS Memorial on the State House grounds, followed by the ceremony inside at noon. So if anyone is interested or available, you're of course welcome to attend that to see Everett, receive his award. Our next, also on the 23rd, my next open office hours will be from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Waterville Public Library. Of course, are welcome to come, share their thoughts, views, concerns, complaints, or anything else they would like to talk with me about, and I always look forward to these sessions. So May 23rd, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Tonight, there's an important meeting at 7:00 p.m. from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. They'll be taking public comment on the draft environmental impact statement for the Shawmut Hydroelectric Project, Lockwood Hydroelectric Project, Hydro Kennebec Hydroelectric Project, and the Weston Hydroelectric Project. The meeting will be held, again, this evening at 7:00 p.m. in the Summit Room at Thomas College. College. I announced this a few meetings back, but in an effort to continue community outreach and engagement, I will be meeting informally on a quarterly basis with a group of Waterville business owners, nonprofit and community leaders, really to solicit feedback and hear their concerns and/or observations about the community. The focus will generally be on the local business environment, the particular challenges they're facing, obviously, as we seek to grow our local economy and tax base, and also push for job creation. So again, just informal sessions, I think a good opportunity for some folks to vent and also discuss current concerns with the city. You see the roster of names here that may grow in the future. I don't think we want it too big, but we're welcoming others also. Lastly, I just want to again mention, our mass notification system is available for sign up. Please sign up at Waterville-me.myfreewords.com. Lots of good information you can receive about all kinds of different city updates. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Where are we at? We are at public comment. Anyone, sorry, I apologize. Thank you. Counselor comment or committee reports? Any counselor comments or committee reports this evening?
Yes, I have a counselor comment. So last year, before I became a counselor, I took over the South End Backpack Program in conjunction with KV Cap, who was our fiscal sponsor. And I will be running the program again this year. KV Cap is, once again, our fiscal sponsor. And so we are currently raising funds to purchase, our goal this year, because we ran out early last year, is to purchase three hundred backpacks as full of school supplies, as well as handout, just little bags of school supplies to any students who received bags last year. And so if anyone is interested in donating either funds or supplies, they should reach out to either myself or Wanda Stewart at KV Cap. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Gannon?
A couple of questions for the, I'm sorry, for the manager. The, if I understood what we got a little while ago, we're looking at a end of fiscal year twenty-three with about a three million dollar surplus, is that right? Or in the fund balance surplus?
Yeah, you heard what I said. If you want to call it surplus, right?
Okay. And the, and in the budget that we have before us currently, you have included how much of that?
Two point five million. And so the last number of years, we've used two million every year, the last, at least a few years, it's been about two million.
Okay. So there's another half million in.
Correct.
Balance to start the new year.
Yep.
When I say used it, in other words, used it for expenses? Because that half million still stays within us, right? I mean, within the city, I guess.
Yes, we're just committing more fund balance to offset taxes essentially this year.
That will be added to by any savings in the future for the fiscal year twenty-four, right? I'm just trying to understand it all, so.
Right. Two and a half million is utilized to offset the budget taxes.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now moving on to public comment. Anyone in the public wishing to make a comment this evening? Nancy.
Hi, Nancy Sanford, Word One. And I'm here tonight as somebody who, in the past two weeks, has been involved in two car accidents. The most recent of which was yesterday on Kennedy Memorial Drive. I was slowing down because there was a red light, and everybody was slowing down in front of me. And I was rear-ended by somebody, somebody who was probably going thirty, thirty-five miles an hour, who clearly was not paying attention. And my concern is that, and actually, as I was going up Kennedy Memorial Drive again today, there was a moment at which I thought, oh, my God, it's going to happen again, because this car is like really, really close to me. And my concern, and this may be more of a conversation with Chief Bonnie, but, and I realize that they can't be everywhere at, you know, all the time, but I think that there needs to be some sort of, I don't know what it is, whether, you know, cameras are installed so people who, who speed, because we all know that people speed up Kennedy Memorial Drive, go, you know, and other places in Waterville College Avenue. Because I'm tired of being someone who goes the speed limit, and I have to worry about these idiots that think that going forty miles an hour is going to get them there two minutes faster, and that they can't wait to drive as they're supposed to. So I will, I intend to have a conversation with Chief Bonnie, but I just wanted to let you folks all know my increasingly severe frustration, to say the very least, with people who just don't obey laws. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Anyone online, Brittany, that wished to make a comment this evening? Thank you. Okay. Anyone else in the public? Okay. You can come on up. All right. Somebody else from this meeting?
Hi, my name is Christine Johnson. I'm the Senior Director of Child and Youth Development at the AYCC. Hi, Jan, how are you? So we are starting an initiative in the South End this summer. We'd like to bring outdoor rec and sports and outdoor play to the kids down there from about kindergarten to fifth grade age. We have a family wellness wraparound grant that we've been running for this past year, where we've been kind of trying to take more families in and cover the cost and the membership and the opportunities and access for all the members of the family. We've been doing it in several different ways, bringing them in the building, but we would like them to be out participating in the city and the spaces in the city. We've sent some people to Elm City Music, we've sent some people to different programs around the city, so we thought that the South End would be a great place to do that as well, get the kids outside. We walked around Green Street Park with some staff yesterday, and it's just a great little, like, bowl to have a really fun summer program going on. So we wanted to let you guys know, we're thinking of doing it Monday through Thursday from ten to two, about that, every day, and have about three or four staff people down there, use funding from the family wellness wraparound grant. Hopefully, parents will come down and participate as well, and just have a myriad of different experiences available, sports clinics. Paula has been talking to a lot of people around the city, you know, Isaac LeBlanc, the football coach, and who's the?
Kevin.
What's his last name? I don't remember.
Kevin.
A track and field coach that wants to run clinics. But then, you know, some arts and crafts, there's that little stage down there, we might do some theater down there, so just a bunch of different stuff. There were a couple of things, we toured the site yesterday. Am I allowed to ask for things right now?
Sure.
Or make suggestions?
You go.
But I'll make suggestions, that we need some kind of bathroom if we're going to do that, so we need a porta potty or something like that. And I could help to fund it or help to support the funding for it as well, too, so. But we would need some kind of trash, like some way to get rid of the trash every day. And basically, a bathroom is really important, but maybe a picnic table or something like that. But just really a few small things that we might need some help with, but other than that, we can help.
If you wouldn't mind just putting that in an email to me or Matt or Public Works Direction, we'll take care of it.
Okay, absolutely. Yeah. So we just want to let you guys know that it was happening. We're very excited about it. I want to see kids get outside, and I want to see their parents follow them outside, so we can get the parents engaged, too. But, yeah. Anything else to add?
No, ma'am, going to be on the backside of this.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No. Thanks, Christine.
It is going to be exciting to have that for the first time, so we're, I'm really excited about, and of course, Park and Rick is helping us with it as well, doing whatever they can. Matt's always great. I send him emails all winter and make plans with him, and he's like, okay. But he's a good sport, he really is. With our program, the Center on the Quality of Life Committee, we're having our first lawn sale this weekend as well. And actually, Chrissy will be there with a table to help people to either register or get the idea or get the information out anyway. And we're also going to put the flyer that they put together, we're going to put it through the classified. I'm a door knocker, and I'm also posting things so that we get that young crowd interested and the parents of the young crowd interested. I'm a believer of feeder programs, and we start them young. And K through five is a great time to put them out there. This young gentleman, Kevin, is all excited about doing the track and field with them, because they have this Olympic summer program going on at Kobe. And if we can get these little people knowing how to run it in a very simple way, we think that that's going to be awesome. And for them to go to Kobe and be participating in this Summer Olympic, we believe would be an awesome thing for them to do as well. We also, there's a Cheryl's Place, it's a new restaurant down there. I actually, I think I shared it with Chrissy, but I'm not sure. The trash was a big deal, because we don't want it hanging around. We know that cans are a problem, people just tend to bring all their own stuff there. And I did ask if we could use their dumpster on a couple of days a week, so that way there, we wouldn't have to worry about it. And of course, Wentworth is still open until four, and so one of us could always just put it in the backseat of our car and probably drop it off as well. So the trash isn't the biggest deal, I think the dumps, the porta potties are. And perhaps having two would be sufficient. If we're, we're looking to have maybe at least twenty students to start with. It's also the park where the field is very open, and so little people are going to come around, their curiosity is going to be piqued, and hopefully, they'll join us. We're also providing, no, myself, but the organization is providing lunch in some way. So there's just a lot of interesting and fun things going on, so real excited about that. And back to my, our lawn sale, it's Saturday from nine to two. A couple of our center members want to do hot dogs and drinks and things like that, and donations are welcome, so if anybody wants to, or you could rent a table, or you could bring your own table. Again, the Public Works is providing some tables for us and tents, so we don't have to do that labor, and then they'll pick it up when we're done. So I always love it when the city and people work together, so it's always exciting.
This is also a green stripper.
Pardon?
This is also a green stripper.
Yes, and we're getting a volleyball net this year. Yay! I love that part. I can't wait to play. So I guess that's about it. Oh, good question.
I have a question.
Okay.
Are you looking for donations for the art sale?
Yes, we are. No clothing, because that gets to be rugged.
Yeah, sure.
So if it's things that are still functioning, too, we wouldn't want anything that's broken.
Not junk.
Those things happen. But anyway, I, yeah, that would be nice.
And how, how would someone get them to you?
Well, you can come in early Saturday morning. I'm trying not to do a whole lot on Friday, we don't really have a place to store things.
Right.
And so early Saturday morning, I know that we have somebody coming in with a truck of furniture and stuff, which is great, you know, so, yeah, if Saturday morning, or if it's small items, I could swing around and pick it up from somebody as well. And I even have that on our flyer that we're using. You can call me for a pickup.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Brittany, anyone else on, anyone online?
No.
Thank you.
Hey there.
Good evening.
I am here with the South End Teen Center, seems to be the theme for tonight. And we wanted to just announce that we're going to have an ice cream social. It's celebrating Neighbor Works Week, and that is on Wednesday, June fifth, so it's a little while away, but by the time there's another meeting, it'll be right before, from two to four, and it's going to be at the South End Teen Center. And we'll be posting it in social media and all of that, so, yep.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Anyone else for public comment this evening? Seeing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And then can I also get a motion to read by title only, please? Oh, we gotta take a bow on that, don't we?
Not quite there yet.
Sorry. Get excited, I don't want to miss that.
That's all right.
That's all right.
Counselor DeBerto?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
And Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, can I get a motion to read by title only, please?
Motion read by title only?
Second.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor DeBerto?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yeah.
And Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Moving on to old business ordinance one hundred dash twenty-two-four.
It's amend the board's committees and commissions ordinance.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Seeing none. I get a, hold on for this one.
You sure can. Counselor DeBerto?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
And Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to new business, resolution one oh three, twenty-two-four.
Authorize issuance of an outdoor dining permit and outdoor dining extension to Kevin Joseph, doing business as You Know Who's Pub.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. Thank you. I spoke with Kevin this afternoon. He unfortunately was not able to come. Tuesday's very busy, he's short-staffed, so he wanted to make sure that we had everything that we had. He was not doing anything different than he has been in the last few years, and his sketch kind of reflects that. So if there are any issues, then we just have to reach out to him. But question, yes?
I believe there was a request a couple of meetings ago to move the barriers down so that, or move the barriers down or move the barriers over so that people didn't park there and affect the business of, was it Holy Cannoli? Yes. So is that?
He's down further from that, but yes, that's a different, that has nothing to do with this one.
That's separate from You Know Who's Pub? Okay.
Yeah, because Holy Cannoli, that would be before Lyons Den, so before Holy Cannoli is. So he sets up after the walkway through, you know, where Lyons Den is to the left.
Okay. I just, I couldn't remember whose business is where.
So, any comments with regard to this request? Seeing none.
All right. Counselor DeBerto?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
And Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
All right. Then moving on to resolution one oh four, twenty-two-four.
Refer to the planning board zoning ordinance amendment to increase housing.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Counselor Finch, since you smiled, I'm going to have you just kind of give a brief head overview of what your, what your goal was here.
Okay. Well, basically, we have a housing crisis, and I was meeting with the Chair of the Planning Board, Sam Berdick, she was unable to make it tonight. And this was a suggestion, in part from her, to basically find ways to increase housing capacity in areas where we don't already have it. You know, the legislature has basically eliminated single-family zoning, and so this is kind of a way, I guess, to eliminate restrictions to housing and allow housing almost anywhere in the city. That's the first part of it. The second part would remove the requirement that any apartment downtown also have allocated parking spots, and this is mostly for the buildings on the west side of Main Street that back up against, between Main Street and the concourse, and they don't have anywhere to have parking. And so by eliminating that requirement, it would allow them to develop that empty space into apartments as, you know, which is much-needed housing in the city.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from the council? Counselor Green?
It's not really a question, but, and I think it's a great idea to look at this, because we've been rezoning properties, and there are a lot of non-conforming housing and commercial zones. But as I look at the map, I, it looks to me like there are some areas of commercial zone which would be not conducive to housing. So I'm just, I would just caution, it seems clean and easy to say we're going to allow housing everywhere, but I hope that the Planning Board would just take a look at that. but I hope that the Planning Board would just take a look at that and make sure that we don't have housing built in a place that's not really suited for housing. That's it.
Yeah, I know there's concerns about the rail track. There's also concerns about down on Airport Road. And both of those are in commercial C. So if we wanted to start with just commercial B and commercial D, which are a lot smaller, and then maybe refine what we send to the Planning Board for commercial C, I'm also okay with that. I'm also okay with the Planning Board coming back to us and saying Airport Road isn't feasible, this part of commercial C isn't feasible. I think it's just up to us and do we want to give them more guidance or do we want them to tell us? So I'm okay with either. I'll just, I'll leave it up to the rest of the council on that end.
I think if that's part of their consideration, that's good enough for me.
I'd like to table this. I'd like to table this for a week or two so we can take a better look at it and get a better idea. Where do we want housing? Where do we not want housing? I'm not saying the housing, the Planning Board doesn't, but at the same time, Airport Road, no. There's a few other places I probably can, after looking at the map a little bit more, come up, we don't want housing.
Okay.
And we just...
Fair enough. All right, so you have a motion table. Do we have a second?
Yep, to the next meeting.
Not hearing a second. Okay.
Oh, I'll, I'll second that. I just, I would ask that we do have a specific charge to the, to the Planning Board and not discuss it next week, but so maybe you could, you know, propose something. Like, for instance, if we're identifying the Airport Road as a place where we don't want housing, I think, you know, that's, that's a good thing to add to this request.
We needed a second. Like, we all, you failed for a second. What's that?
The motion failed for a second, not a second.
No, I seconded it.
I know it. It's not, tabling isn't debatable, is it?
It's a great question. I don't know. Yeah, okay.
So we didn't debate anything, or, you did, I guess.
All right, well, there we go. Let's vote on the table then. That is not debatable.
Okay.
These are fine.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel DeBrito?
No.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Gagnon?
No.
Counsel Finch?
No.
And Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
Okay. Not tabled.
Not tabled.
I will, in light of that and in light of Tom's concerns, I will go ahead and propose just to amend this, to strip out commercial C. I think that's where most of the concerns around where we don't want housing are. And wait until we come back with something a little more concrete for the Planning Board.
Okay, so we have an amendment.
Yes.
Give a second for the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Let's, can we vote on that?
We sure can. Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
I'm sorry, Brittany, could you, is, is, this is just to exclude commercial C? Is that right? Correct. Okay. Um, yes.
Counsel Gagnon?
Yes.
Counsel Finch?
Yes.
And Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion or are we all good to move as amended? All right, we get a vote called moves amended.
We can. Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Gagnon?
Yes.
Counsel Finch?
Yes.
And Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Moving on to resolution 105-2024.
It's approve bid award to Autotronics LLC for fire department stretcher.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Chief, you want to talk about this real briefly?
Good evening, council. Appreciate you taking up this item this evening. We have recently determined that we would like to replace one of the stretchers in our front-line ambulance. Those stretchers are extremely expensive. And we recently received about $157,000 from the state of Maine through legislative action for funds specific to the use of EMS. The only problem with that funding is that Maine EMS has capped that, those funds, at $50,000 for capital expenses. So knowing that a stretcher was a big-ticket item, we felt like this benefited the fire department most, specifically contributing to workplace safety and crew efficiency as it relates to lifting heavy patients. So I put out to bid through, following the city's purchasing policy, through the newspaper. I sent the bid specs to four vendors that were known to me across the state. We received one bid from Autotronics of Bangor, which is the company we purchased the ambulance off from. We've done a lot of business with them. And while the amount originally was for two stretchers, the amount of, the money for the stretchers is extremely high. So I'm going to recommend to the council at this point, we purchase one complete unit. That includes a stretcher, power load, and installation in the amount of $75,000. I'm asking to use $50,000 of that EMS stabilization funding and $25,319.50 from the Fire Rescue Reserve account. Happy to answer any other questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions?
That...
Counsel Finch?
Yeah, sorry. So that $75,000 is for one stretcher. So if you wanted to buy another stretcher, we'd be looking at another 75? Or is it a, if you purchase two, it's a, kind of, they wind up costing less to buy two than just buy one?
Basically, when I went back to the vendor, because I had originally bid out two stretchers with the intent to buy two of them, that was, that was the price for two. I subsequently contacted Autotronics and I said, "What if we just purchase one?" You know, I don't want to, as the council knows, we've been extremely conservative with that Fire Rescue Reserve account over the years. That account has paid for our brand-new ambulance that sets up there. I have not come and asked for any other money out of that account. This is, this is a good use of those funds. And buying two would essentially cut that account in half at this point, and I'm not comfortable doing that. So my recommendation at this point is to purchase one stretcher, and that will equip the second ambulance. So we have two ambulances that run 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And both, by purchasing one stretcher, both of those will have power loads because the new one also came with one. I know that's a little confusing. By purchasing one stretcher, power-load stretcher, it will equip the department with two right now.
Perfect. Counsel Gagnon?
The money that, how is this reserve built up?
The reserve is built up through cost recovery funds. So when the fire department goes out for like accident cleanups and stuff like that, we would, we bill for that. And any cost recovery that, that we receive from that goes into this account.
So this isn't part of the budget? You don't budget for what's anticipated for income there?
No, because it's variable. It's, and it's not consistent. Some months can be $1,000, some months can be $5,000. Some months can be nothing.
But it's always something. At the end of the year, it's always something. I mean...
Yeah, generally speaking.
So shouldn't we be budgeting for that, Mr. Manager?
I'll defer the fire chief. From your opinion, I'll just ignore it.
Well, at the end of the day, you know, historically speaking, the fire department has never, never generated revenue. We, we essentially, any, any capital items that we needed, we would come to council and say, "I need this stretcher." And hopefully it was funded through taxation of some form. I worked with the mayor and the previous mayor at the time to create some programs through the fire department that generated revenue. One of them was EMS billing, of course, that is budgeted and helps offset, offset the operating costs of our EMS system. The other one was cost recovery. And one of the things we wanted to do when we got into this, specifically EMS, is we wanted to make sure that we were setting aside some funding specific for capital expenditures like this stretcher. So we deployed the cost recovery account for that specific purpose so that the fire department would have some money set aside as a savings account that was available for capital expenditures like this that, that weren't necessarily planned for.
I guess, you know, as we're heading into the first reading of the budget next year, which, for next year, next year's budget, for, which will at least initially be prepared with the tax increase on it, I'm finding more and more that there's all these little reserves that sit in these departments. And while, I appreciate, and I'm going to support this, but appreciate how the fire department can go out and generate their revenue, some revenue. Not all departments can do that. And we're not a fire department budget, we are a city budget. And any revenues that anyone can bring in to the city, I think people are obligated to do, to do the best they can and save money. But I have a trouble with it being isolated to individual departments. Some are a lot, some are a little bit, and then there's just seems to be this, you know, in the old days, you used to call it a slush fund, right? But I don't think that's what's intended, to pay for all kinds of things, but certainly these types of things. I wish this had been part of the budget. You know, we're still in the middle of budget, it could be. And, you know, take it from there. But, you know, and then also budget for the revenue. Even though you never know how much it is up or down, there's got to be some leveling, you know. Accountants will give you some leveling, some number. We anticipate revenues for other things in the city. I think that this has probably been around long enough that we could probably anticipate something that we part of the budget. So those are the types of troubles that I'm having with you, and I'm not picking on you, I'm just, maybe I am, but I'm just saying that overall across the city, there seems to be these things. And, you know, there are those of us who are trying to just, you know, keep a lid on, on spending. You know, I'd like there to be a reserve fund for taxpayers.
I'll just add, this is standard practice across all municipalities. I'll just say actually Waterville has much fewer of these reserve accounts than other similar municipalities out there. The councils, of course, the agents to expend out of this, that's why the chief is here tonight asking for this approval. So I think with, you know, full transparency, this comes to a council meeting, it's discussed, the expenditure is approved here at the council level. So I think they are transparent, but this is a very common and established practice throughout all municipalities for funds like this.
I'd just respond by saying, you're right, probably a standard across many municipalities. We're the highest taxed in this county. So maybe we need to start being, doing things a little differently. I don't want to debate you.
Right, but if you shifted this onto the tax rate, that's obviously not helping that, correct? I mean, if you built more in the budget for these expenses...
No, I'm talking about shifting the income into the budget. I'm not talking about shifting the expense only. In other words, this is a very important thing. Is it the most important thing in the city of Waterville? I don't know. It's obviously the most important to the fire department, but I'm not sure if it's the most important in the city that we can be using this revenue for. That's, that's all. I did.
If I could just respond, you can, real quickly. It's certainly not the most important thing to the fire department to have this fund set aside. We would, we, if I needed this expenditure, I would just come to council and say, you know, "Will you appropriate the funds?" It doesn't matter what account it comes from. And to be honest with you, whether it's set aside in a Fire Rescue Reserve account or the general fund, that's a matter of policy for you guys to, you know, to debate. I will say that it is very common in fire departments to have these accounts, and specifically in the volunteer organizations and the organizations that surround us, particularly because fire trucks are very expensive. So you see communities like, for example, Winslow, or, or for example, the town of Albion, specifically contribute to capital funds every single year so that they avoid bonding. And that's one thing that Waterville hasn't done, is specifically set aside money to put into these capital accounts. Specifically, this account has been generated off, off revenue from the fire department. So, just a...
Yeah, my final, I don't want to belabor this, but my final point is just simply, it seems to me that it's just odd accounting. It, it's not a fire issue or whatever. It's just, usually you take in all the revenues, it goes into some big pot, and then it's distributed from there. But Waterville has these little fiefdoms of departments that have their own little funds, sets of funds. Some have more, some have less, depending on what's going on. And it doesn't matter to me what other towns are doing. I, I'm just trying to figure out what's best for the city of Waterville and taxpayers here. That's all I want to say. Thanks.
Counsel Green?
Yeah, so, you know, this, we've discussed this before. In this case, reading your memo, Chief Essler, it looks to me like there was an opportunity here with the funds you received to do something and that you needed additional funding. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think the question, you know, the question is, is a fair one about budgeting, especially since we're right in the season. But if this weren't, is this something that would be budgeted if you didn't have the grant funding or the emergency funds? How, how did it come about that you determined that you need, you need the stretcher?
Well, as the fire chief, I'm the city's risk manager, and I identify liabilities in the agency that come about. And, you know, one of the issues that we're seeing is, is the potential for injury lifting, lifting patients. Oftentimes, you'll see a fire truck behind an ambulance when it responds to a call. And it's simply because we have to send more than two people to some emergencies to lift people into the back of our ambulances because we have manual-loading stretchers, whereas most agencies have auto-loaders. I would have bought auto-loaders, but in the inception of the program, we were being extremely conservative. And those stretchers that we currently have right now were purchased entirely by private funds through a donation from Colby College. So at the time, I didn't spend the long dollar essentially and buy the auto-loaders. We bought what we could essentially afford at that time with, with private funding. So this, this is a need in our organization, no questions asked. The, the funds that came from the state specifically allowed us to spend $50,000 in capital expenditures. So knowing that we had $50,000 available to us, these auto-loading stretchers was a priority. And so what I'm asking for is to spend the money, essentially, that's been given to us by the state for this intended purpose. But I'm also asking for $25,000 out of that Fire Rescue Reserve account because these, these stretchers are extremely expensive.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Anyone from the public?
No one.
Thank you. All right, we get a vote?
All right, Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Gagnon?
Yes.
Counsel Finch?
Yes.
And Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
All right, moving on to resolution 106-2024.
Establishing hours for voter registration for the June 11th, 2024 primary election.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jumping the gun there.
No.
I apologize. We want to just set what those, set what those hours are.
For voter registration?
Yes.
That's a good question. I believe they're during normal office hours.
So it's 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM?
Yeah.
Yeah, eight to 4:30 with no special evening hours?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, sir. Counsel Finch?
Brittany, you may not be able to answer this, but I had a constituent ask me why we eliminated the Thursday night evening hours. I know this were eliminated a couple of years ago. You might not know the answer, but...
I do not know.
Any particular reason, if anybody knows why there's no more evening hours?
I do not know, but I will follow up with Patty and get back to you.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Questions? Okay, now can we get a vote?
We can.
Thank you.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counsel Gagnon?
Yes.
Counsel Finch?
Yes.
And Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And with that, we have reached the end of the agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Thank you.